Eric was a dedicated public servant who cared deeply about ending the scourge of gun violence. He was a beloved colleague and his work at the council and later at the mayor's office of criminal justice focused on improving the lives of New Yorkers. Eric will always be a part of our council family and his former colleagues at the community engagement division are here to honor his memory. His family is having a celebration of life service on February 10th at 11:00 a.m. at the Ebenezer AME Church in Fort Washington, Maryland, and the service will be livestreamed as well. My thoughts are with his family, his loved ones, and of course, our staff here at the council. As a city and country, we're all mourning the killing of Tyree Nichols by police officers in Memphis, Tennessee. Tyree was a loving father, an avid photographer and skateboarder, and a valued member of his community. He should be alive today, and the police brutality that took his life demands accountability. Black people in this country, people of color, as well as many other communities have lost too many of our children, mothers, fathers, and siblings to police violence, and it has to end. As a mother and grandmother, my heart aches for Tyree's mother and for his entire family as they continue to grieve his loss. Hearing his mother express how she felt when she heard that her son called for her as he was being brutally murdered was more than heartbreaking. As we pursue accountability and change, it's important to prioritize measures that support the bereaved in their healing and recovery from the severe trauma that continues to impact our communities. As a city, we must focus on the necessary policy changes that we can enact to end all forms of abusive and discriminatory policing and police violence. I also want to take a moment to discuss the situation that unfolded in front of the Watson Hotel in Manhattan this week. This is a difficult issue. It's disappointing that the administration chose to handle the situation outside of the Watson Hotel in the manner it did, especially on a day when the governor proposed resources to support our city in helping asylum seekers and the neighborhoods welcoming them. From the beginning of the effort to move individuals to the Brooklyn Cruise Terminal, there appeared to be inefficient communication and transparency. There were also indications that some individuals outside of the hotel who were not migrants did not help the overall situation but may have actually played a role in undermining trust. I believe that some of this could have been averted with more openness about the cruise terminal, earlier engagement, access, and clear communication regarding the challenge the city was facing that precipitated a need to move people to accommodate families. That didn't happen, and unfortunately, we ended up in a standoff with a lack of trust on all sides. Rather than utilizing law enforcement to target asylum seekers who may have been uncertain and fearful, I would have preferred to see the administration engage incredible voices outside of their own officials to play a constructive role. For those migrants who are working and had concerns about getting to their jobs in distant locations within a new city and those who were worried, there could have been space for more constructive conversations to address their concerns. It's unfortunate that that didn't occur, and we just have to do better. We understand the challenges facing our city, and it's critical that those committed to being constructive participants be included as part of achieving solutions. We need to stop treating each other as enemies and disregarding the input of those acting in good faith because it's leaving everyone in our city who needs care left as collateral damage. My hope is that we can start to address these issues far more collaboratively because so many of us are committed to doing the right thing for people. We need earlier engagement and more collaborative efforts from the administration rather than an indifference of partnership with other officials and community members who are committed to being helpful. The reality is that our city faced a homelessness crisis well before we began welcoming people seeking asylum in our country here, in our city. New asylum seekers only added to our high unhoused population, and the challenges we face as a city became even greater. The city has not focused enough on actions it can take on its own to reduce the population in our shelter system by removing the barriers to those transitioning into permanent housing, especially longtime New Yorkers. While the administration's efforts to advocate for more resources and support from our federal and state government partners are extremely critical, that cannot be to the exclusion of city-led policy changes. The city should eliminate the 90-day rule that delays those in our shelter system from receiving CityFEP's rental vouchers. The council has repeatedly said this. We must ensure that the adequate funding and staffing of our social service agencies that helps end delays to supportive housing placements, which can also help move people out of the shelter system. The administration can address the staffing issues and vacancies within its agencies that impede solutions to our homelessness crisis. There are steps the city can and must take to address the bureaucratic inefficiencies in our systems serving people in our city's homeless and social service systems. It is unacceptable when half of food stamp recipients cannot access federal benefits due to agency understaffing or that housing agencies are unable to advance affordable housing development. This has presented real consequences for New Yorkers, and it cannot, it cannot continue. Okay, let's move on to our stated agenda. First, we'll be voting on the following appointments. Stephen Chu as a member of the Landmarks Preservation Commission, Angie Master as a member of the Landmarks Preservation Commission, Mark Ginsberg as a member of the Landmarks Preservation Commission, Carol R. Enmid as a commissioner of the Board of Elections, Deanna Hoskins as a member of the Board of Correction, Rachel Betterd as a member of the Board of Correction. We will also vote on the following finance items. A transparency resolution approving new designations and changes of certain organizations receiving funding in the expense budget. Next, we'll be voting on the following land use items. 446-448 Park Avenue rezoning will facilitate the development of a six-story residential building with 11 housing units, including approximately three affordable under MIH. The council will be modifying the MIH text amendment to strike option two, leaving only option one as the requirement under MIH in Councilmember Restler's district. Reform Temple of Forest Hills rezoning will facilitate the mixed-use redevelopment of the existing temple to increase its square footage, construct 153 housing units above, including approximately 38 permanently affordable under MIH, 66 attended parking spaces on the cellar level, and 102 bike parking spaces. The community facility and house of worship will be fully ADA accessible, include flexible multipurpose sanctuary space, classrooms, and offices on the ground floor. The council will be modifying the MIH text amendment to strike option two, leaving only option one as the requirement under MIH in Councilmember Schulman's district. The annual report pursuant to Rule 2.75B in relation to complaints of sexual harassment as defined by the council's anti-discrimination and harassment policy will also be submitted. Today, we'll be voting on the following pieces of legislation. First, we'll consider a pair of resolutions in support of establishing Lunar New Year as an official federal and city holiday. As we all know, Lunar New Year is one of the more important annual celebrations in many East and South Asian cultures. With more than 15% of the population in New York being of Asian descent, it only seems appropriate to have this annual holiday be observed as an official school holiday and an official holiday in the city of New York. Resolution 331-A, sponsored by Councilmember Christopher Marte, calls for Lunar New Year to be recognized as an annual school holiday and as an official holiday in New York City. Resolution 424-A, sponsored by Councilmember Sandra Ung, calls on Congress to pass and the president to sign H.R. 430, which establishes Lunar New Year as a federal holiday. Next, Introduction 421-A, sponsored by Councilmember Kevin Riley, will require the Department of Homeless Services to provide monthly reporting on the total number of families with children living within the shelter system, their average length of stay, how many families have transitioned to permanent housing, and data related to school enrollment and attendance for youth in shelters. I now invite Councilmember Riley to come forward to discuss his bill.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. I'm happy to give remarks today strengthening New York City's council's commitment to better serve our most vulnerable families. It is a priority for this council to rectify the flaws within our infrastructure and enhance the means of our agencies to provide resources and support to all New Yorkers, especially marginalized communities. As a father of three, it is a privilege to lead on this necessary piece of legislation to empower the Department of Homeless Services to protect vulnerable New Yorkers, families with children in the shelter. Through effective data reporting, Intro 421-A mandates the Department of Homeless Services to provide quarterly data reports, quantifying the number of families with children in our shelter system, identifying their needs for services, as well as metrics for their school enrollment and attendance. Partnership with my colleagues, DSS, DHS, and input from affected families has resulted in further transparency and accountability with updated online reporting starting October 1st of this year. As a city, we must protect families preventing them from entering the shelter system but also creating a sustainable plan that helps them get out. Thank you, Speaker Adams, my colleagues co-sponsoring this bill, and to all the advocates supporting this piece of legislation to obstruct the cycle that leaves New York City families in the shelter system with a lack of resources to rebuild and gain stability. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Riley. Next, we have Introduction 676-A, sponsored by Councilmember Crystal Hudson, which would mandate that new construction housing projects receiving city financial assistance ensure all units adhere to universal design, a housing design approach that addresses barriers faced by individuals with disabilities, older adults, and youth with more robust accessibility features. I now invite Councilmember Hudson to come forward and speak about her bill.
Thank you. Thank you, Speaker Adams. Today, I'm honored that the council will pass the fourth piece of my Age in Place NYC legislative package. Introduction 676 will ensure that 100% of city subsidized developments incorporate universal design elements like proper door handles, sufficient clearances to accommodate a wheelchair, low or adjustable countertops, grab bars or wall reinforcement for the future installation of grab bars, and light switches and outlets in accessible locations. By ensuring every new city subsidized development incorporates universal design elements, we're moving one step closer to guaranteeing every single home is accessible for all New Yorkers regardless of their age or physical ability. The council has demonstrated again by taking up this bill that solving older adult issues is a priority and has signaled that we must continue to invest in the resources we need to ensure we can all age in place with dignity. While universal design should be standard practice in all construction and every single home, this bill will take us a step closer to achieving true accessibility in our city. I'd like to thank Speaker Adams for her leadership and support for this package. The bill's co-prime sponsors, councilmembers Lynda Lee, Lynn Schulman, and Kristen Richardson-Jordan. I'll leave it there. This is for later, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. Thank you so much, Councilmember Hudson. Next, Introduction 92-A, sponsored by Deputy Speaker Diana Ayala, calls for an advisory board to advise the mayor and the city council on accessibility issues regarding city shelters. The board would meet quarterly and include people living with a disability and who currently reside in or previously lived in a homeless shelter. The advisory board would provide an annual report on its review and recommendations. We also have Introduction 141-A, also sponsored by the deputy speaker, which would amend the New York City Building Code to require signage pointing users to the doors that are power-operated or low-energy power-operated, and Introduction 375-A, which would require HPD to report on the number of affordable housing units marketed for people with disabilities that are actually rented to persons with disabilities. I now invite Deputy Speaker Ayala to the podium to speak about her bills.
I don't think there's much to add. I think that the speaker gave a general description of what these, these are three of my legislative babies are, but I really want to thank the disabilities community for really participating in a conversation that allowed us a better lens on how to legislatively fix and tweak the way that people with disabilities kind of walk through, you know, through life. We heard from, you know, I remember two years ago, councilmember, then councilmember Levin and I had a hearing on the Mental Health and Disabilities Committee with General Welfare and heard from a lot of individuals specifically that were living in shelter who spoke about their inability to plug in, you know, CPAP machines, to be able to charge their wheelchairs, to not being able to adequately get in and out of the bathrooms because the doors were positioned in ways that made it difficult for them to navigate through those doors. And so, these pieces of legislation are really derived from those conversations, so I really want to thank all of the advocates that come to our hearings and really help inform our policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Speaker. This brings us to our pay equity package, which will provide key data and analysis on inequity in our municipal force across race and gender and enact practices that help promote workforce diversity and pay equity. First is Introduction 527-A, sponsored by Councilmember Carmen de la Rosa, which will require each city agency and department that requires job applicants to take a civil service exam to report on data related to those exams in order to evaluate and expand diverse recruitment and retention within city government. It would also require reporting on those agencies and departments' training programs to evaluate recruitment efforts across government. The Department of Citywide Administrative Services would be tasked with coordinating the data collection and reporting to the council. I now invite Councilmember de la Rosa to the podium to speak about her bill.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. I want to thank you for your leadership on this issue. Pay equity is important. I want to thank Councilmember Lewis, the Women's Caucus, and all of our colleagues here today. You heard what Intro 527-A does and what it requires, so I will leave it at that. I will say that in December, we also passed Intro 658, which establishes the Civil Service Ambassador Program. I see that those bills, the one we're passing today and the ones already passed, complement each other in that they require DCAST to report on civil service examinations, outcomes, training, and recruitment efforts, and it is, the intent is to make sure that we have streamlined processes that the council can track. We are consistently reviewing the staffing shortages and diversity recruitment deficits we are facing in our city's municipal workforce. There are tens of thousands of vacancies across agencies as of June 2022, and we want to ensure that agencies can recover from these shortages and build robust staffs that reflect the needs and the people of our city. The city council wants to create streamlined opportunities for that to occur and create strong accountability measures to ensure that our government is delivering services for the people. Municipal workers are the backbone of our city, and operating with skeleton staff in some of the most in-demand departments will not cut it. Our city is still recovering from the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic, and we need our municipal workforce to be fully staffed and trained and that, and we can continue delivering many of the necessary services that our constituents depend on. A big part of that work is opening the key to opportunity. I would like to take the opportunity to thank the dedicated staff of the Civil Service and Labor Committee, Assistant Deputy Director Nick Connell, Policy Analyst Elizabeth Arts, as well as my staff, Chief of Staff James Burke, my Legislative Director Kiana Diaz, and my Communications Director Frey Net Familia. I would also like to thank, once again, Speaker Adams for her support and for the backing of these important legislative solutions that will profoundly and positively impact the lives of many workers in our city and many New Yorkers. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. Second in the package is Introduction 541-A, sponsored by Councilmember Lewis, which would expand on the existing pay equity law, Local Law 18 of 2019, by requiring DCAST to collect and provide additional employment and pay data to the council. It would capture more of the city workforce and provide year-round access to pay and employment data so the council can provide more robust oversight at its discretion. I now invite Councilmember Lewis to come forward and speak about her important bill today.
Thank you, Speaker Adams, for your leadership, and thank you, Chair de la Rosa, for your leadership on this as well. I'm excited to tell you today about a piece of legislation we're advancing, which will bring New York City one step closer to its goal on being a place where people can live, work, and thrive equally. Today, the council will pass, sorry, today the council will be voting on Intro 541-A, which will amend Local Law 18 and build on the ability to dig into the pay disparities we still see in New York City government. This amendment is the next step in how we achieve pay equity for the city's essential and diverse workforce. New York City has been on a pay equity journey for some time now. In 2019, City Council passed Local Law 18, which began the process of collecting data to understand pay disparities within the city's workforce, but it didn't go far enough. What we found is that New York City has some work to do. Women in the city still make 73 cents on the dollar to their male colleagues. New York City's black male employees make 79 cents for every dollar made by their white counterparts, and you better believe female employees of color are still getting the short end of their intersectional stick, with black women making an appalling 69 cents on the dollar when compared to their white male counterparts. These numbers represent the non-adjusted pay gap. Occupational segregation is the driving force of pay inequity across New York City municipal workforce. I don't need to tell you that this is unacceptable. We all know it is. We have been having this conversation about pay equity for many, many years now, and talking about it isn't solving the problem. Passing this package will do that. Intro 541-A will require the administration to provide additional reporting data to the council to enable us to dive deeper into the causes of pay disparities that were exposed by Local Law 18. The council only, the council currently only has access to pay data for 90 days. This bill removes the 90-day window and gives the council data team access to the information year-round, and it was quite the battle with the administration on that. Pay equity is the cornerstone of a just society. Without it, employees face unequal opportunities that harms them and their families and our communities. I want to thank Speaker Adams, Councilmember de la Rosa, for their leadership on this, and I look forward to this package being passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. And finally, Introduction 515-A, sponsored by yours truly, requires city agencies to conduct an analysis of compensation data and measures to address pay disparity in occupational segregation, diversity and inclusion training, and schedule and workplace accommodations. The head of each agency would be required to submit an annual report on staff retention, promotion, termination, and resignation with accompanying compensation information. Finally, this legislation requires DCAST to contract with a private sector expert to conduct a three-year pay equity analysis on a minimum number of civil service titles. The analysis would examine civil service titles with the largest gender and racial or ethnic demographic difference from the demographic found in New York City. I truly believe that civil service can be a gateway to economic mobility and the middle class in our city. I've championed many programs to make this avenue more accessible to a broader range of New Yorkers. However, for civil service opportunities to meet this potential, we must eliminate pay disparities based on gender, race, or ethnicity. The New York City Council began this push for pay equity back in 2018 in my first term as a city council member. Then, in 2019, we passed Local Law 18, requiring the mayor's office of data analytics, or MODA, to aggregate data from city agencies to find pay discrepancies based on gender, race, or ethnicity. This law also required that MODA provide access to this data to the council so that our own data team could run an analysis. Our talented team of data scientists has done this work, facilitating the council in releasing such important reports. The results, however, have been disappointing. While there have been minor improvements, pay disparities within titles continue, as Councilmember Lewis said. Alarmingly, occupational segregation also exists, meaning employees of color and women are concentrated into certain positions within city government that tend to be the lowest paid. This undermines the health of our municipal workforce, which we know currently faces severe challenges. For civil service work to be a meaningful path towards economic mobility, salaries, promotions, and advancement must be equitable. It is simply unacceptable that civil service titles with the lowest median salaries have a larger proportion of women and people of color. This must change, and today is a critical step towards achieving the necessary modifications with these bills. That concludes our stated agenda, and with that, we'll take on topic questions. First...
Questions on the bill. Garten?
I'll get something on the preamble of the bills.
Right. That's my question. So, anything on the bill themselves, landing items, et cetera?
That last, your bill, obviously, there's a struggles to hire city workers right now. Has that been considered as an impact on the legislation? Will the legislation have an impact on, like, the lack of hiring, or do you consider this kind of a separate issue?
Well, not necessarily a separate issue. I think that everything is relative when it comes to this entire package, when it comes to pay equity, the reason that we're still fighting for it. We still need, as Councilmember Lewis said, it's been difficult for us to put all of the components of our prior legislation together to get the results that we need. We think that this package today is going to give us the teeth that we need to get this mission accomplished finally.
Thank you. So, no other on topic, or if I'm off topic, for my vote?
I've got two questions. The first question, given what you said at the top of the remarks today, and given the mayor's approach on the migrant situation in particular with the Watson, do you feel confident in his ability to effectively spend this $1 billion that Pocel promised on the migrant situation yesterday? And, you know, I mean, if not, like, what would your approach to that be?
You know, I believe that the governor's proposal is a positive proposal, and we are still, you know, as a council, as partners, offering ourselves to help advise the situation. Funding certainly, though, isn't the only thing that we need, so when we speak in terms of funding, we know that the city has options. We have things that we can do within the city's own control to control and address the homelessness situation, the situation that we felt way before the asylum seekers started coming in, in the numbers that they've been coming into. The administration hasn't done so, but it needs to. We're going to, as a council, have to begin to take action to pass laws in this regard. We have too many barriers that have held New Yorkers seeking places to live backwards, bureaucracy that has been there for no apparent reason. We, as a council, have to work on those things to move forward. As far as the funding, the funding is fine, and again, we're grateful to the governor for providing that funding. We really do need to take a look inward, though. That funding aside, we need to take a look inward to see what we can do to drive those things out that have held us back for so long, the reason that we're here, to begin with, again, the situation that existed way before the asylum seekers started coming in.
Kelly?
To follow up on that, have you gone to the Brooklyn Cruise Terminal and visited yourself? What is your understanding of the conditions there? Also, between the council and the mayor, what is the relationship when it comes to identifying places for these humanitarian relief centers? How is that though?
Thank you, Kelly. Great question. Several of my colleagues have visited the Brooklyn Cruise Terminal. I have not personally been there. I understand that, for the most part, it is a model of the previous HIRCs. It is a model of Randall's Island, and which, we've seen it. So, the situation that we are in with the HIRCs, the council has, in the past, provided several hotel options that we should be taking a look at for HIRCs. We see that the administration has used some of them. We still do have a number of other suggestions as far as hotels that could be used as HIRCs. Our preference, of course, would be the HIRC model to provide those wraparound services to get asylum seekers set up initially and to provide, you know, all of the amenities that they need to start them on their way in the city. So, the answer is no, I have not been to this particular newer HIRC because it is a model of the former HIRCs, and we have provided other options as well, as far as hotels. Thank you.
Another question on the funding and the budget, so the way the governor broke it down, it was like, you know, the city would pay for one-third, state one-third, feds one-third. She said she hasn't gotten any commitment from the president yet of a dollar figure, but he said he's going to give some amount of money. but he said he's going to give some amount of money. I guess, what's your reaction to that? The mayor's been talking about the getting money from the federal government, probably more than anything else.
Yeah, and you know, I, I happen to agree with that. We, as you've stated, it seems to be like, you know, a piece here and a piece there and a piece there. We are still waiting for the federal government to do their part here. As has been said ad nauseam, this is a national crisis, a crisis that New York City and other cities, a, a select few other cities who are sanctuary cities, should not bear alone. This is a crisis that affects this entire country, and we have been left to handle the situation on our own. So, yes, we do look forward to our federal partners to step up. In, in my estimation, they should have stepped up quite a while ago, but I do have confidence that that help is on the way.
Yeah, so, May 11th has been, said that President Biden is going to lift the COVID emergency, and there's a consequence to that. There's a whole bunch of things that are set in motion, Medicaid. Are you concerned that we could turn a page on this even though we know that there's a lot of stuff still to be resolved here? Are you concerned, particularly when you combine this outstanding need for the immigrant crisis and then add there what seems to be the federal government's desire to close a chapter on COVID?
That, that's a great question. You know, we, okay, of course, we've all just been made aware of this, this upcoming deadline and this change coming forward, so we have some things to work out, you know, obviously, over the, over the upcoming weeks and months to prepare for it. Concern, I, I think there is always concern when we are presented with the unknown. However, I do believe that we do have a date, and we do have, we do have wonderful minds, you know, within our staff that are jumping on it immediately to see what we can do to meet the needs of that new date, which, of course, will probably approach us quicker than we want it to.
I just had a quick follow-up because you were all dressed in red, and you had to create that out there today.
Yes.
I'm just wondering, are you not concerned in the mayor's management report, the city's response for life-threatening response, exactly the kind of thing that you guys were concerned about, it's gone from nine minutes and 34 seconds to two, to 10 minutes and 17 seconds in fiscal year '22? That's got to be a concern.
It absolutely is, and I, I don't mean to cut you off, but to, for, for us as a council, we, we've been talking about the disparities in headcount and vacancies. So, when we have a situation where we are faced now with agencies that aren't meeting the needs of the people, there, of course, becomes us to have wider eyes on the budget. The budget reflects our priorities, which we are looking forward to this budget season. We are also, again, presenting ourselves as partners to help with some solutions to the agencies that have deficits right now in headcount, because in our estimation as a council, we cannot afford to continue these headcounts and continue to have our New Yorkers suffer as a result of that.
So, the status on your mind, that number about critical response?
Certainly. Thank you.
I want to ask about the 145 rezoning in Harlem. I noticed today the developer there, not that he wants to restart the U-LR there that was withdrawn last time, basically the same project, but with deeper affordability levels. I know that some folks thought it was kind of a missed opportunity last time, that so much housing never got built, partly because the local member was opposed. This time around, if it, if it got to the floor, will you consider supporting regardless of the local member felt about it?
Well, that's kind of premature. The information just came out literally hours ago, I believe, so I really can't comment on something that has not seen the initial basis of the proposal yet. We don't know what that looks like. We don't know any nuances that may come out of the proposal yet, so I, I'm not able to answer that.
I get one more. So, we had a story, come on, I have a problem. We had a story a few days back on Julie Wong and her husband slash campaign manager, and, you know, some of it got into the appearance of influence Eugene, our husband, has on some of the government side of things. Is that a concern to you, and do you feel that that warrants COIB taking a look at it?
Well, I, I, I don't really have any comment on the COIB side. I, I do, of course, always look forward to discretion in anything that we do. We're all public figures, so I look forward to future discretion when it comes to anything or any, any behavior of, of my colleagues, myself included in that. I would hope that better discretion would be, would be handled, would be used.
Thank you.
The mayor took immediate issue with the governor's budget yesterday. There's a part, I believe, of asking the city for 500 million more to give to the MTA, which would apparently, you know, come out of the city's budget. It wasn't mentioned in your reaction statement yesterday. Have you given any thought or analysis to that? Would you be okay with the city, you know, giving 500 million more to the MTA?
Well, I don't have a figure to your question, Jeff. Certainly, anything that is coming toward us when it comes to the budget, the analysis of the budget going forward, we're going to take into consideration anything that is needed for this council to do, to do our part to make things better for New Yorkers, so it's something that we will take a look at in the future. MTA is certainly a priority.
Now, because you're such a good leader, as you're saying, I mean, I noticed...
I didn't say that, Jeff, but thank you.
You were so much more popular than the mayor.
Is that true?
Yeah, way more popular, you know. 2025 is right around the corner. Would you ever run for mayor?
I'm going to keep my day job for now, Jeff Colton, but thank you so much for that question. I appreciate the kudos. Thanks. Thanks, everybody.